Still waiting for one more council member, several wait a minute or two.
It's very good. She did a great job. It's very beautiful. We're going to give you the chair.
It's about three after four, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. Are we ready to go? So I'll go ahead and call the town council meeting of December 8th, 2025 to order. And the opening of the meeting would be the invocation and the pledge.
Do you want me to start?
Family, Father, we thank you for today. And Lord, thank you for this early taste of winter and the little bit of snow that we have gotten so far. Father, as we enter into this holiday season, we just ask you allow each and every one of us to spend time with our families, our friends and loved ones. And as we come to a close with 2025, we just pray for the new year. We pray for good health and prosperity for all. And Father, as always, we just ask for a productive and enjoyable meeting this evening. All these things we pray. Jesus' name.
And Terry, when we just sent the pledge.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nice turnout today. Appreciate it. And just remind everybody if you don't need to get up to do it right now, but if you're going to say anything especially, just need to sign in the back there. Just get things started here. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. And it's been a little cold out there, but it's that time of year, so. All right. Let's get going here. And we've got the approval minutes, last month's minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions?
November 10th.
I'm going to approve the November 10th, 2025 minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second. Further discussion, directions? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And actually, we've got a couple of public hearings, one at 4:15 and one at 4:30. We're going to go from the, instead of doing the treasurer's report, we're going to go ahead and have some information regarding annexations in general. If we could go ahead and hear that, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Janine Harrington, Assistant Town Administrator. So I'd like to provide an overview on what the annexation process is, what it actually means and how it ties in with our development regulations. It really is important to understand the process and the procedures and what an annexation actually means when we're looking at it. So, if I scroll, we'll have three main points of discussion. What an annexation is and what it is not. How annexations must align with our comprehensive plan, which is the guiding document for the town's development, and the town's zoning and development process after annexation. These components together full the form, full decision-making process that affects staff, the planning and zoning commission, as well as our town council as we go through approval processes. So what is an annexation? In layman's terms, it is bringing land into the town's corporate limits. Importantly, it is not approval of the actual development on a piece of property. So anything that happens on the property is determined further down the line once it gets into the development review process. That depends on the zoning and what it can actually be developed as. So all of our town codes and regulations will come into play. It has to go through the full review process, through the town, the state, the county, if applicable, sediment erosion control, forest conservation, stormwater management, everything must be addressed during the development review process. So concept plans, if they are provided within an annexation petition, are purely for information, just conceptual, what could be done. It is not approval of that development or what they're actually proposing. An eligibility for a property to be annexed into the town comes from the comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about in a little bit. The municipal growth area and the land use, future land use map that's determined as part of the plan, that shows what properties can be annexed into the town and what their approximate zoning should be. It's important to note that when a property is annexed into the town, you're still paying county taxes. There's the fire and rescue services, fire, police, solid waste, there's a lot of other taxes. They pay town taxes on top of any county taxes that's required. Those annexations are submitted because they need water and sewer. That's the main reason that we see them, in order to allow for development, because they don't have the water and sewer availability in rural areas outside of town boundary. And annexations fund our infrastructure improvements. They fund the wastewater treatment land expansion. They fund extension of water lines, the water tower construction. Those are all very important to maintaining the infrastructure within the town as well. So the annexation process is fairly simple. It goes through the, they generally have a pre-submission meeting where they meet the staff, kind of go over what they're looking to do. They would submit their annexation petition. That gets submitted to the town attorney, who would do their legal review for sufficiency as far as the state statutes are concerned. It goes to the planning and zoning commission for their recommendation on zoning category that's proposed. It then goes to the town council for a public hearing. It's important to note that the public hearing has been published and must be published twice if the property is less than 25 acres and four times if it's greater than 25 acres. Both of the projects that were seen tonight were advertised for four-week intervals in the County Times. So then we have our public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. This is where the council can hear public comments from the public and also see presentations from the applicants themselves. After this session, the public hearing is closed. The council can then proceed to approve, approve conditions or deny an annexation petition. If it's approved, it would move forward into the effective date period. And that gets forwarded to the county and the state, everybody to know the effective date and to adjust the town's boundaries and the corporate limits. During the review process, it is also important to note that 30 days prior to the public hearing, we are required to send the annexation petitions to the state, non-private planning, and to the county. We also include tri-county council for their to do an official 30-day review prior to us going to a public hearing. The state did provide commentary, and we did not receive comments from the county in these two particular instances. So as we move forward, that's something that we'll be talking about a little bit more. So comprehensive plan, as I noted, the comprehensive plan is the most important document that we have. It is the guiding policy, the guiding principle for how development occurs in the town. We held a very comprehensive review process. We had stakeholder meetings. We had consultants that came in and helped us with drafting the plan. There is a QR code link on the screen, so if you wanted to, you could, that will take you directly to our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2025. As I mentioned, within the comprehensive plan, we have our land use element. We also have our municipal growth element. This is where, again, we looked at the county's designated growth areas, and a lot of that was in the Cedar Lane region. The large blue swath on the right-hand side of the map, that's the Cedar Lane. That was all existing designated growth area under the county's comprehensive plan. We do have additional land out to the west of town that was existing commercial, limited commercial under the county zoning. And in order to develop any further, they would need additional water and sewer services. We did include that within our municipal growth boundary for this session. So this has to be updated every 10 years. We go through the process, it gets reviewed by the county, it's reviewed by the state. Need to make sure that we're meeting all the state mandates as far as housing, transportation, if it's a land use and growth management, how many houses that we're going to be seeing. There's a water and sewer element. There's a stormwater management element. So it really does take a comprehensive look at the town and how we're supposed to be Designated growth areas and priority funding areas are very important under the state statutes. As you can see, this is directly from the county's public GIS map. So the red boundary that's on the map is the existing municipal boundary, and the additional area that's surrounding it is the county's designated growth areas that they have in their comprehensive plan. Now, I know that it seems kind of counterintuitive, but we're going to get into a little bit of discussion on what those mean and why they're important. So I think what a lot of people think of development, and they see the large lot, single-family development, they think that the environmental features and the streams and the forests are being protected. It's actually not the case in many situations. When you have these large lot developments, you're actually not preserving the environmental features as much as you would be if you did a clustered development or you had a higher density. And it's kind of hard to see, so we'll get into that in the next slide. But it does tie into the designated growth area and priority funding area. And you can see a lot of information on the Maryland Department of Planning's website about sustainable growth and how development should occur. They really do say that if you're going to protect the rural land and reduce sprawl, having a designated growth area, which the town is, as your priority funding area, if you concentrate development into that one space, you're actually preserving more land for the farming and for agriculture. So they do talk about, those are state-supported growth areas, and they do provide additional funding for water and sewer connections and for different things that may be needed for people to connect to the infrastructure. Annexations, I know it sounds weird, and a lot of people don't understand, but they can avoid scattered and costly development when you do it the right way. The sprawl, there is a very interesting book called Rural by Design by Randall Arden, and this was drilled into our brains when we went through planning school and looking at what sustainable growth and sustainable development actually means. So you have sprawl, which is the large lot, traditional subdivision layout that a lot of people are used to, and so that's the example over here on the left side. So there's not a lot of pure space. You do still have to meet forest conservation regulations, and if there is a stream or a wetland, yes, you have to have the buffers. But you're taking up more land owned by private individuals when you have these large residential subdivisions. When you go into the town, and I'll get into an example specifically with the planned use development, the mixed-use zoning that the town has, and how it concentrates development to a specific area. You've seen examples with Meadows at Town Run where there's, I mean, 80% of the site was preserved in forest. You know, that's a huge difference to looking at, you know, only meeting the 15% that's required by the state mandate. So it actually does preserve a lot more environmental features than people would imagine. So it really is important to look at that. Higher density doesn't necessarily mean more destruction to the environment. And he had a quote that I absolutely love that fit within the environment rather than on top of it. "Your development can be designed to nestle into rather than intrude on its natural setting. Seen affluence both into and out from the property can be protected if this criterion is one of the site designers on." So it really is important to kind of look at the full context of development, and if there's an issue with the zoning and the actual regulations that are in the town code, that needs to be addressed at that level. The town regulations in the development process, as I mentioned, you're going to have this cycle. You have your comprehensive plan, that determines your municipal growth boundary. That opens up the annexation petitions that are received. You would then do a zoning code review and amendments if necessary. And then you have your development review process, which is the actual development of the site. So after an annexation, that's where we'll get into the meat and bones of what is being developed on the property. You do your traffic studies, you'd be doing your stormwater management, forest conservation. That's where the full review is happening. I do have a QR code on the screen if anyone wanted to go directly to the town code to see what our regulations are. And our zoning code is extremely important. As I mentioned, if there is an issue, if someone doesn't like the way that development is happening, that's where it needs to be changed. That's where it needs to be updated. So it's going to address the location, height, bulk, lot coverage, you know, what setbacks you're required to have, how many parking spaces you're required to have, how much landscaping, open space. All of that is determined in the zoning code. So that's how we know how our development is moving forward. So this is an example of a puddle, and I did use Meadows at Town Run just as a recent example since it's fairly new. Up at the top is the development plan, what it was supposed to look like, and then you can see down here at the built environment. So there's actually a lot more forest that's being preserved because you have the concentration of lots on the property, as well as the open space and parks that are required throughout under the puddle regulations. So the puddle regulations, just as an example, the maximum dwelling, residential dwelling, I'm sorry, density is five dwelling units per acre. Anything that's floodplain, wetlands, environmental features has to be subtracted from the total acreage before you determine your density. So that tells you right there that environmental protection is extremely important in the puddle zoning. They have a minimum open space requirement of 30, I think, what is it, 20% is the minimum, and it can go up, and you can get additional features on the site if you increase your amount of open space requirement. There's general design criteria. There's required mix of housing standards and housing units. So there's a lot that goes into the review process when we receive a submission. So I want everyone to understand that we're not just saying, oh, go ahead, just pop a bunch of houses down, you know, in the town. We really do look at a lot of different features. We want to make sure that there's landscaping, appropriate parking, appropriate street widths and lengths, and looking at the density and the types of houses that are required. So there is a lot that goes into it. So that's kind of a summary, very short summary of the annexation process and why the zoning is where we actually determine development on property, not the actual annexation itself. And on how to answer any questions that everyone may have at this point.
Question, you said that for annexation, we can approve, approve with conditions or deny. Is, we can't table?
You can table.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council? Okay. We do have 20. Michelle, do you have anything to add there?
No.
Okay.
I was going to say, I do have four 20s, and their first public hearing is at 4:15. So I entertain the motion to close the regular meeting and the public hearings. Case number 3925.
I'll make a motion to close our meeting and open the public meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Michelle, you have?
Janine.
Janine's going to make a, give us a report?
Yes.
Regarding this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. For the record, this is the Hall annexation petition, case number 39-25, resolution 2-25. The property was, the petition was submitted to the state and county governments for review on November 6th of 2025. We did receive comments back from the Maryland Department of Planning, and we did receive email confirmation that the county did not have any comments at this time. The property, the most of public hearing was published in the County Times newspaper for different occasions in compliance with the state regulations. We did send certified letters to all of the adjoining property owners, as well as posted the politerian notice on the property in two different locations, and staff did certify that that was the case. So as an overview, I do have my staff report in the package. The property is approximately 16.35 acres. They are proceeding forward with, they'd like to proceed forward with the commercial highway zoning. The planning commission did review this request at their November 18th meeting and did recommend approval of the commercial highway zoning compliance would be 2025 coming in the plan. So at this time, we do not have any close development on the property. That, again, will be determined later on once we get into the development review process. Currently, under the county's water and sewer master plan, this property is zoned near planned service. So if the annexation was to move forward, we would submit a water and sewer amendment to the county to bring that up to either W3 S3 or W1 S1, depending on the development as it occurs forward. Now, this property does require a waiver on the zoning from the county because it's currently zoned RPD, the rural preservation district, with a very low density requirement, and going to commercial highway, it would be a substantial change in zoning, so it would require a waiver from the county at that point. And then, moving forward with the changes, that would be submitted back to the state for review of their priority funding area designation on the property. We did receive public comments. We did receive, at this point, four individual letters, emails, and all of those were provided to the council as part of the campaign.
I only have two printed out.
So there's a, in front of you, you have public comments regarding cases 39-25 and 40-25, and there's three letters that were in that, and then there was additional email on top.
Okay.
And I do have kind of a view on the responses for you as well. And with that, staff is recommending a motion to the council to review the annexation petition as well as the public comments and determine the next steps in moving forward. If we give authorization to proceed.
Here to represent Mr. Hall and his wife Nancy, who own lot number seven for the Greenwood Hills subdivision, X map 32, the address as you know it, the address as you know is 4095 Green Hill Lane, Leonard Town. As the assistant town attorney stated, 16.35 acres, it is contiguous and adjoining. That's a requirement of the state annexation statute, that it does touch and join the existing corporate limits of the town of Leonard Town. And it's zoned RPD in the county. It does have transit on Maryland 5. And it shares through a 30-foot shared access driveway with Mr. Hall, my client, and his wife, and a neighboring property owner, the gardeners. Mr. Hall is a business owner in the county. He owns D and G Customs Specialties, not far from the property. We, on behalf of my client, have submitted the annexation petition, a draft annexation resolution, the annexation plan, which I believe is filed as 2-25. The annexation resolution will be filed as 39-25, if I'm not incorrect. And we provided petition for annexation, petition form, legal description with the meets and bounds description as required by state law, and other documents that were submitted to the application, in support of the application. And as you know, the staff report has come out. There is adjacent land that's in the corporate limits that's annexed, the CH, I'm sorry, that is currently zoned CH. The property itself has two encumbrances. One is open space, and I believe another is a TDLR that was put upon the property some years ago. The use, there's presently a shed. I believe it's 42 by 130 feet, 4500 square feet on the property. And again, there's a shared access way, but the pipe stem that connects to the highway is 39, 38 feet with a 30-foot common access way. I'd just like to say a couple of things that came to mind as staff was briefing on the annexation process. That, yes, I want to point out, yes, that my client would need a waiver to upzone the property because it substantially does not conform with the current county zoning. It's either a waiver obtained by the governing body, the county, or it's a five-year wait. So it's not a stop deal if the county doesn't approve it right away. It can be obtained in a five-year period, or it can just wait for the five-year period to run, and then it's free to be upzoned by the county or by the municipality. I want to say something about annexation. There's this other thing called de-annexation. And I just want to highlight that annexation doesn't mean that you're going to build a skyscraper on the land right away. You're not going to develop it. There are no plans for any major development by my client at this time. And de-annexation is always an option for both my client and for the town. It can be mutually agreed to de-annex later on. Also, I'd like to remind you all that Maryland is a late vesting state, meaning that until the property, until building permits are obtained and footers are laid and some discernible development has occurred on the property, you're free to change your laws, change your zoning ordinance, change your subdivision laws, change your building regulations, and my client will be beholden to that until he obtains the permits and does the actual work on the property. So Maryland is very pro-local government in terms of being a late vesting state. But I'd like to, at this time, to address some of the issues raised by some of the letters that were submitted into the record. I think particularly by the neighbors on lot six, Greenwood Hills, the gardeners. They assert that the property would be incompatible with the neighborhood. and other documents that were submitted to the application in support of the application. And as you know, the staff report has come out. There is adjacent land, it's in the corporate limits, that's annexed the CH, I'm sorry, that is currently zoned CH. The property itself has two encumbrances. One is open space, and I believe another is a TDLR that was put upon the property some years ago. The use, there's presently a shed. I believe it's forty-two by one hundred and thirty feet, forty-five hundred square feet on the property. And again, there's a shared access way, but the pipe stem that connects to the highway is thirty-nine, thirty-eight feet with a thirty-foot common access way. I think, you know, I'd just like to say a couple things that came to mind as staff was briefing on the, on the annexation process. That yes, I want to point out, yes, that my client would need a waiver to upzone the property because it substantially does not conform with the current county zoning. It's either a waiver obtained by the governing body, the county, or it's a five-year wait. So it's, it's not a stop deal if the county doesn't approve it right away. It can be obtained in a five-year period, or it can just wait for the five-year period to run, and then it is free to be upzoned by the county or by the municipality. I want to say something about annexation, there's this other thing called de-annexation. And I, you know, I just want to highlight that annexation doesn't mean that you're gonna build a skyscraper on the land right away, you're not gonna develop it. There are no plans for any major development by my client at this time. And de-annexation is always an option for both my client and for the town. It can be mutually agreed to de-annex later on. Also like to remind you all that Maryland is a late vesting state, meaning that until the property, until building permits are obtained and the, and footers are laid and some discernible development has occurred on the property, you're free to change your laws, to change your zoning ordinance, change your subdivision laws, change your building regulations, and my client will be beholden to that until he obtains the permits and does the actual work on the property. So Maryland is very pro-local government in terms of being a late vesting state. But I'd like to, at this time, to address some of the issues raised by some of the letters that were submitted into the record. I think particularly by the neighbors on lot six, Greenwood Hills, the gardeners. They assert that the property would be incompatible with the neighborhood. Again, we want to remind the council that the neighboring properties to the south were annexed in two thousand and six, approximately twenty acres, and they're zoned CH. So although the area, if you look at the property, the property is almost surrounded by municipal territory, to the east across Maypole Road, and to the south across Maryland five. Municipal corporate limits are very nearby, and those areas are zoned differently than the county. I think there's a lot of concern that occurs when you're annexing land on the fringe of a municipality, and there's issues with what's gonna happen to that land. And it can raise some definite concerns, and my client certainly recognizes that. But I wanna, I wanna point out that one of the issues that was raised by the gardeners was that lot seven, my client's property, has no frontage, no commonality with the US, or I'm sorry, Maryland five, and it does. It has a thirty-eight-foot pipe stem that directly connects and is directly joining to the state highway right away. Also like to indicate, as you well know, the town's planning and zoning commission approved the, the annexation with CH zoning on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Some other, I think, interesting facts to go to support my client's request to annex and to upzone the property are the fact that you changed your comprehensive plan a few years ago, and you placed it in your municipal growth area, and the property is listed in the municipal growth area of the town comprehensive plan. So this would not be a radical departure if the zoning is granted for CH from the existing RPD of the county. Furthermore, the intersects, just intersection just to the east of the property is critical aerial land. It's, it's got a critical area overlay that's IDA, intensely developed area, just a few hundred yards to the east at the intersection of Maryland five and Maypole, Maypole. And of course, as you know, far better than I, you have the Leonard Town Center with the food line, the Family Dollar, the Walgreens. You have other commercial properties along Maryland five and to the west of this particular property. So we think the neighborhood, yes, it's because it's straddled on the fringe of the corporate territories of town, yes, there's some area in the county that's lower, less intensely zoned, but there are some areas nearby the town that indicated this area is just ripe for municipal growth. And, you know, municipalities are not forbidden from annexing lightly, less intensely developed property, or even agricultural property can be annexed by a municipality for that matter. So it's really quite early in the game to make judgment calls on what should be done in this case. It seems to me that the municipality has already made the decision that it wishes to include this property in its corporate limits and its growth boundary. Again, I like to stress that the conceptual plans that have been desired and been laid out in the opposition letter by the neighbor, asking for more details on traffic, noise, lighting, and viewshed, is, are just premature at this time in view of this being an annexation request, which is a legislative act. These other issues that will be settled by the planning commission or the board of appeals are quasi-judicial matters. They're more appropriate for those entities that have more expertise in these areas. So this, this property, if it goes down the road to further development, which may be the desire of anyone that lives around the corporate limits of the town, my client will make the decision later. So any of, many of the discussions and oppositions made by the gardeners and others, there's purely speculative at this matter. So we certainly hope that you will support this annexation, uphold the decisions of the town and the planning commission that occurred earlier, and go ahead and annex the property. Under Maryland law, you're not required to immediately pass the annexation resolution after the hearing. You can wait a number of days or weeks for that matter, the law is silent on the issue, to be quite frank. If you wanted to wait a month or two, you could do that. And I don't know that my client would have any heartburn with that, but it's certainly one of the areas of the annexation statute where you have full home rule authority to control that. So if there's any questions, I have my client here, sit in the back, we'll try to address them.
So do they, do they share a driveway? Is that what I was reading in this letter?
They do share a driveway, common access drive to the rear of the property with the gardeners.
And is that gonna be a sign?
It goes to a metal building back there, forty by eighty metal building, and then pass that.
No, we have to wait for it to be closed from the public hearing.
Do you have any questions?
Just need to get the public comment.
I was gonna say, next, next.
Then we'll open the meeting back, yeah, and then we can talk.
Right.
Sure, all right, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public regarding this particular annexation?
Yes, sir.
Please, Janine, come up and give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Joe Gardner. I am the property owner that you guys have heard about just in the previous presentation. And I appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes to explain some more of what, what my thoughts since I saw this petition. A couple of administrative points, maybe first. I did not receive a certified letter for this petition. I don't know whether that was.
It came back in the mail today, we have it downstairs. The post office had refused to deliver it, they said no mail receptacle, but evidently you used the post office box.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
The addresses were obtained from Estad, and so they used your mailing address. But we did receive four of them back today.
Right of that. So it's an administrative, administrative slight point. I did find out about it, I have done some research, my first foray into this in any regard. So I've been doing a lot of learning, a lot of research. I did consult with a, a land use attorney up in McLeita, and he's the one who submitted that letter. I don't know whether you all had a chance to read it in its entirety or not, but the, a few things that I wanted to try and emphasize here. I understand that there's a difference between annexation and development. I do though see that on the application, there is the zoning. Requested town zoning, CH, we've heard that so already. Proposed town use residential. My review, I'm not a lawyer, but my review of the town code, residential, pardon, I'm sorry, town zoning CH, the proposed, or the uses listed in your code, don't include residential. There's a list of twenty-five things that it can be, and with exception, or with special permission, there's another three or four, but residential, except for medium density, I don't remember how they put it, apartment or multi-use is available is one of those exceptions. But the twenty-five basic uses under CH, resident, residential is not long. Let's see. The other point is, yes, there is frontage, it, that frontage is my driveway. The thirty-foot driveway that is the only frontage for this property along Route five. And, and so I just asked the council how they would, how they would like it if their driveway ran through commercial development. Consider that please, if you would. And everything else, I think, is, is in the letter. I had some other notes, but I don't want to take any more of your time. Just appreciate the opportunity. I recommend that perhaps a continuance or whatever the word was here, perhaps address not the annexation, but the proper zoning of the property in consideration of what is around it, maybe, maybe more of it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the, the.
Regular.
Regular meeting, yes.
I move to close the public hearing and reopen the regular business meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Because of the time, I think we're gonna need to move to the next.
I was gonna say.
And then we'll come back to the question.
Right, yep. Okay, so now I entertain a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for case number forty-two five.
I move to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for case number forty dash twenty-five, annexation petition, resolution three dash twenty-five for Johnson, Johnston Properties.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Again, for the record, Janine Harrington, Assistant Town Administrator. So for this property, the Johnson, Anthony and Johnson Property Annexation Petition, resolution number three dash twenty-five and case number forty dash twenty-five. This again was, the property was posted in compliance with the state regulations. Certified letters were mailed to the adjoining property owners, and the annexation petition for the hearing was posted in the County Times for future intervals prior to the public hearing. This was also sent to the Maryland Department of Planning and the county government on November sixth for their official thirty-day review. We did receive commentary from the Maryland Department of Planning as part of the record. And given the county did not have any additional comments at this time. So overall, the project is, the, the prop, there's two properties involved. There's parcel two sixty-six and parcel two thirty-five. Parcel two thirty-five is approximately fifteen point one eight acres. Parcel two sixty-six is three point two one acres. At this point, parcel two thirty-five is vacant and is proposed to be zoned, the planned unit development from the RL zoning of the county. And the other parcel, two sixty-six, had an existing single-family residential dwelling on it, and they would be looking for the RSF zoning, the residential single-family, from the RL county zoning. So under the, as mentioned, under the annexation review, they do not have any concept plans at this time for what would be developed on the property besides the existing single-family dwelling to be consistent with what's already on the site. The town's comprehensive plan was amended in twenty twenty-five to include this in the future growth area, and it was already included in the county's designated growth area. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the zoning designations on their November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and recommend, recommended approval of the PUD zoning designation request for parcel two thirty-five and the RSF zoning designation for parcel two sixty-six. So with that, staff conclusion is that after concluding the public hearing, the town council may move to approve, deny, or delay the annexation petition and authorize staff to see the next steps to complete the annexation process. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the applicant or representative, Janine, sir? Please give your name and address for the record.
Rodney Gerst, C, seven fifty Seagull Beach Road from Shepherd, Maryland, two six seven eight. And, yeah, so this is a piece of property that obviously in the expansion or the comprehensive plan where it should have been there, it's in the, it's important on this piece to realize that it's in both development, it's in the county development district, and it's basically in the expansion on Leonard Town. And I think, as we've done several projects in Leonard Town, including Leonard's Grant, and that was one and two, the, as you know, you guys know us and what we've done, is that we're just, you know, we're, we're trying to provide the housing that's, that's needed within the town, and to try to kind of see the town grow, and, and on some of these, you know, projects, as you know, some towns, you know, some, some single-family homes get built, but, you know, what else building single-family homes for in Leonard's Grant that now townhomes is called snore, and it's real cost, where as fair as there is, if anybody comes in the industry of what we build and, and what we do, and it breaks my heart to see what, what housing costs nowadays. My daughter's friends constantly going to me and saying, Mr. Gerst, what can we do? Can we do this, where can we go, this and that? And I'm like, yeah, it's difficult, it's difficult to figure that out. And like, I think I've talked before, housing is, you know, the environment, everything is kind of an ecosystem. You know, you have an ecosystem, housing you need to support a thriving town. You need to have some people that can stay, the younger people can stay, the people that maybe chose to downside, maybe chose to go out of the single-family and go into something. So to this property, although we've done, you know, minimal sketching, this and that, we, we do see a combination of maybe townhome, single-family component. And, yeah, we're just excited to be involved in another piece of land that became available, became available in the town with, with the town Leonard Town. And yet we fully respect the, the community, the, the council, the planning commissions, you know, rights to determine how they want to see it done. You know, we're, we're, we're a very capable, trustworthy builder if, if, if wanted. And if not, we surely would understand that as well. One, one thing I would say that if, if the importance of the town, when they annex something in, they also maintain control of what the planning commission does not, to see what you're gonna see, the C five you're gonna see versus if it, if expansion came from, from, same area, it's counting in, they get water and stuff out here, or however they ultimately did, and I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but whatever that came in there, then you're at the whims of whatever kind of they decide happens on the perimeter of, of your town. And that's kind of how we've always looked at it, like, we just love, you know, Leonard Town, you know, from, you know, everything we've ever done here, to kind of look at complementing what you guys do. I'm not the town, I get credit for building and being part of the town, I'm blessed to be here. But this is the town, you, you guys are the town. I'm not the town, I'm a builder that loves providing housing within that, within that arena and this and that. But like, when you see the tree lighting on Facebook, we see that, this is the town. And I surely ultimately want to do it to be part of, you know, enhancing that. And, and that's what every piece of, you know, every piece of property where we're going, I think we're, I'm sixty, we're all sixty-four, I think, we keep saying our last, I think this will be our last. But, but in that, like, we're just trying to find what's needed, what makes sense for the town, and, and move forward with a, a project that hopefully enhances the town and keeps building this incredible, you know, what you guys have created collectively over the last, you know, many years it's been, it's a wonderful place, and just like try to add on to that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerst. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Come on, yeah, come on up and give us your name and your address for the record.
I'm John McDonald, and this is my wife Jennifer McDonald. We live at two two eight five five Cedar Lane Road, which is the property that is directly adjacent to the annex part. The piece of property has been in my family since nineteen thirty-seven, so it's nearly a hundred years. It was all owned by one person, my uncle, who was a farmer. He never had kids, he never had a wife, he never made a will. The land was left to my mother and her two sisters. The two sisters have passed, and their ten kids are now in charge of that piece of land. They don't live near here, really no connection to that land, so it doesn't mean a lot to them. We've known for many, many years that they would eventually have the opportunity to sell. Obviously, selling as farmland is pennies on the dollar, as they say. It would have to be used for something else. We expected that, and honestly, this day right here to give our hat is, has been long awaited. I think the big thing for us is, we, we're not against progress in Leonard Town. I own the business in Leonard Town. And Leonard Town has become a thriving community. I was here in the late nineteen nineties, and half the buildings were empty. And I looked at all I had at that time, that year wasn't gonna make it five. Those midnights when I own a piece of place in Leonard Town where you could stand right in the middle of Washington Street and probably play tennis, you'd never have to worry about a car coming by after six o'clock. And that's the honest truth. And so Leonard Town has done great, and we are not against the progress, we're not even against the development. What we are against. What we are against and strongly against is the townhouses. We are fine with the single-family development on that piece of property. Throughout, everything in the extensive or the comprehensive plan, it constantly mentions maintaining the rural character of Leonard Town. I encourage you, everybody on the council, to ride down Cedar Lane Road and take a look at that road and tell me if you think townhouses do all on that piece of property. Okay? It is not, it's not just being selfish on our part to say that we don't want people, we're not against neighbors. We have a whole community next to us in Academy Hills. We know how to get along with people. I fetch my dog at, I fetch my dog for your house.
Yes, I, I brought your dog back to you.
Yes, um, so it's not like, you know, that, that we're like, uh, what they call the people, they go out in the wilderness and live by themselves. We're not off the British or whatever they call them. Anyway, we are just strongly against putting two-hundred-and-fifty units on that piece of land, five-hundred vehicles, if anybody ever goes on Cedar Lane Road. I try to get out every morning to come to Leonard Town. You put that many cars on that road, nobody goes anywhere. Absolutely not. The other way coming out of there is Blacksmith's Shop Road. It's about a one-and-a-half lane road. You have to pull over when you pass somebody. That empties on the San Angeles Church Road. There's absolutely no way that that is gonna work with five hundred cars coming out of there. Other concerns, which I guess are outlined, are just the absolute, um, I guess, oversaturation of people on the school system. Everybody's trying to change the boundaries, redistrict and all that. There, there's a lot of problems with overcrowding already. You add five hundred more people, it just gets worse. Our hospital is always at capacity, nobody can get in. People in the EMS community constantly saying they can barely handle the amount of people they have to take care of on the daily basis. At some point, we just have to look at, not stopping, I'm not encouraging that, but we have to slow down. Our infrastructure cannot handle another five hundred homes or five hundred students. It's just not able. Did you notice anything else? I just feel like, like I said, we're not against the progress, we're not against the single-family homes, we're not against improving Leonard Town and things like that. It's just that location for townhouses, for the overcrowding, it just has, there has to be a better plan that will go along with the comprehensive plan, that will go along with the needs of the community based on what Leonard Town is and what we want Leonard Town to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Any other public comments? Come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Good hate on him.
I'm Earl Womack, twenty-three, three, twenty-one, Park Green Hill, Florida. That's off of Cedar Lane Road. The McDonald's, they are good neighbors. They're not against the development. I am. Rodney knows me, he knows how I feel. As far as I'm concerned, she said that annexing land don't mean a development. Why are you gonna annex farmland into town for sewage and water if you ain't planning on developing it? I mean, you know, it's there in black and white. Pardon Rodney, but if this goes through, he's gonna take one of the, I get emotional, I'm a bit upset. He's gonna take one of the prettiest drives through San Mary's County, and he's gonna screw it up. Y'all are here to better town, to better the people. We ain't got no infrastructure to handle all this. To the Hall's supposed to be getting seven hundred homes out there. You add that plus this, you know, dag on well that, um, Potato Hill and then the Matley property, that's where all that's headed. Things have got to slow down. We do not have the highways for it. You go out here and now, and, and traffic will be blocked, backed up from the school clear up here to two forty-five. You want a new doctor, you can't get them, they ain't taking no new patients, like they said about the hospital. You go over there and you set, set, set. You go to urgent cares, they used to be pretty quick, they're worse than hospitals a lot of times. So all in all, I think, need to throw the brakes on and slow this thing down, and I, like, to the Hall, if you wanna build, build that. Put the other on hold for now and get some infrastructure, get some roads. You get all this traffic out there, how are you gonna build a road then? It's gonna cost more money, it's gonna slow things down more, plus it's gonna, um, take a lot longer to do it. You know, um, I was born in Ridge, moved to town in fifty-six. I remember two traffic lights in this whole county. Maybe that's one of the problems, maybe I'm getting too old. Maybe I need to pass on and leave it to the younger generation and stuff like that, but I'm not ready. I'm not ready to go nowhere yet. I put my farm in ag, ag preservation, you know? Rodney, he made the remark about the prices of, um, what it costs to, to build homes and all. I know it costs a lot and all that, but destroying our farmland is not, not the answer. When farmland's gone, you don't get it back. It's gone. And farming is what built this county. Tobacco farming, they done away with that. You know, you hear them talk, they say that, uh, they're for the farmers. I find that hard to believe. They want farming out of here so that they can just explode everything and have wall-to-wall houses, you know? I guess I said my piece.
Thank you, sir.
You got any questions?
Can't ask him. We'll ask him.
We'll get other comments and then...
Sorry Rodney, but that's our fee.
I, I, I respect that.
You probably won't talk to me next time.
No, I'll talk to you, you know that, you know that.
All right, any other public comments before we close it? Yes, sir?
Comment? Um, James C N R C third. I'm from Hollywood End, I'm real close to Cedar Lane. My group flunkers on the view of Cedar Lane, and I'm not for, against growing, growing, you know, I understand that. Everybody's gotta have a place to live, but being able to support it is a big thing. How many of y'all can say you got locals that you got that goes to raking kids for summer camp? How bad just pulling off those side road belt, get in there during the summer? And you got the elderly people that still drive at that nursing home to come out of there. You got to sit twenty minutes, you lucky, if you are on top of your game, the belt will get out of there. And they'll get out safely. And how many people you have, loved ones coming out from college that comes out to have back entrance to come down that hill? It's just, it's so much, you know, it's, you know, I mean, I support everyone's gotta have a house, but man, it is just, and then the blind turn from Blacksmith's Road that comes out, you know, once San Angeles, you, especially right now, now's the prime season of being dark at five o'clock, here we are, sorry, how many snows we've already had, and you first rain in twenty minutes, you won't be listening for that five o'clock siren over here, and where is it at? It's right over here in Leonard Town somewhere. You know? You know, just think about the other little bit of stuff that, turn the heat up, heat's turned up all the way around. I don't mean, that's just a thought with it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
I move to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So can we start these as, do them separate? Let's do the whole property first and then, um, this other one, just so there's no confusion and we don't have multiple questions?
I was gonna say, we're not gonna, we'll go back, we'll do the treasurer's report after we do these. So, yeah, go back to the, um, administrator's report for case number thirty-nine twenty-five. Any other comments there from staff?
No additional comments, just happy to answer any questions.
So we're talking about the hall?
The hall.
Okay, yeah. I, I guess just some clarification from me and then the audience. Can you just clarify commercial highway again, because I think somebody said there's, could be presidential? Can we just get clarification?
On the application, it, it had the, um, that's exhibit one A, it did say proposed use residential, uh, but again, at this time, there's no definitive development plans for the property, but they have noted that, uh, the parcel that's, uh, located directly in front of this piece is also owned by Mr. Hall, and at some point, those properties could be combined, um, for development. So that's why they're looking for the commercial highway.
But we don't do that. Who does that? Our planning is that, or county planning is that?
Yeah, if it was annexed into the town, it would be a boundary line adjusted with the town. Could have to report a, a plat for that.
What did planning and zoning recommend in November remind me?
They recommended the commercial highway zoning designation due to the comprehensive plan, uh, having so...
Development plans. Did you want to say something? Just gonna use it for like overflow basement work, so it's kind of a nut. The building's there, I need use it.
And let me add that this would be original zoning, original town zoning for this property, meaning that if there's a current use that's residential, such as an accessory building such as this, it's considered a non-conforming use under the zoning ordinance and can continue despite the technical limitations in your codes or residential uses or commercial use for that.
Thank you.
And I will defer back to the, um, package that contains the plat for the Greenwood Hills Minor Subdivision and Forest Conservation Plan. There really is a very limited space for any kind of development on this property. The majority of it is encumbered by forest conservation, uh, sensitive areas, and, um, there's a density reservation, uh, that was taken off of that by the county. So there's a very small, uh, there's a construction easement towards the front of the property, um, and that's where they would actually be able to develop. So there isn't a lot of actual development space on that portion alone. So I just wanted to reiterate that with, uh, record.
Two things, Janine, too. So one of the things I'm hesitant about is that they didn't receive any of their certified mail. I realize that's not our fault, but they've had zero time to prepare for what their property is. But the other piece is their driveway that they specifically called out. How will that work going forward if something is eventually possibly going to be...
Signed on to an agreement. They, it, they, it has to be open for their use, and it has, the entirety of that easement has to be open, but nevertheless, it is still owned by Farmstead Seven. So there are plot rights with the maintenance agreement and the right of use, okay?
Thank you, Mike. Can that easement location, say they develop that little area and it looks like the only really little spot they can develop is that construction easement area? If they wanted, if they needed to move the driveway in order to do something different, would both proprietors have to agree to that?
Yes, they would.
Got it.
And, and that easement can't be screened.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Just your concern about the, the notices, um, their, the property was posted on all, on the sides that they would be notified of, and their attorney did send a letter last week. They were familiar with it, but, I mean, certainly regret that they didn't get their letter, that they weren't aware of it.
Thank you, Lish.
I just got the letter today, not anybody else, but, in the email, I just got email today with this letter.
Right, we, well, that, we received it, but we just sent, before the meeting, sent everybody the, uh, notice.
Yeah, so I mean, for me to review it, I really haven't had time to review it, I guess.
Someone's come in just this afternoon.
Sure.
Again, we would not be approving the actual use, this is just approving the annexation.
Right. And then it's the forty-five day waiting period.
And then just so I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but the comp plan, we have this included in the comp plan area, and it is zoned in the comp plan as potential commercial highway?
It is zoned as commercial, so in the municipal growth area map, which is on the screen here, the Hall property is this red triangular piece, and that red does represent commercial land use.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I know this isn't really today, but I'm just gonna ask this so I have a better understanding. Right now, it's zoned rural preservation district, so we would need a waiver from the county. How, how does that process work for us? Like, is that like, it's a waiting game? Is that how that works? Like, if we submit for that, or something to understand?
There is a, and actually part of the state's comment letter, uh, the very back of their comment letter, is a municipal charter or annexation resolution representation form. So this would be, um, something that was submitted to the county, uh, in order for them to approve the zoning change, uh, prior to the five-year waiting period. Otherwise, we would be subject to a five-year waiting period before any development could occur.
But it was requested in the packet thirty days ago that we sent, and, um, they have not responded, other than this morning, they said they didn't have any comments at this time. So our attorney said that it could move forward, we would still be addressing the issue of the zoning category after the fact, but the county still have that.
Right, okay. So before the, say it gets annexed, before the waiver is signed, it stays as RPD? What would the zoning be?
Well, it's the most comparable residential.
Okay, well, it's sort of move into our zoning residential, got it.
If it wasn't capable to be resolved.
Okay.
I, I definitely have a concern about the, the shared driveway. I don't know that I quite understand how that's gonna work, but, um, I, I agree that I don't know that commercial vehicles and residential vehicles should be driving necessarily in the same driveway. So I don't, I don't know what to do about it, but it seems like that's something we should be able to do.
Is it something that we could just table and then come back to? Do a little more research on it? With, when you table something, is there a certain timeframe that it has to come back, or is that just at our discretion when we want to bring it back?
I don't think it's at our discretion. I, I don't think there was a...
There's no, there's no set time, timeline for it, okay?
If I could answer that? I could respond to that question on the, when there, when you have a shared access easement for access to property is contiguous to one another, when the parties record the deed in the land records, they agree to certain terms. Sometimes the terms will, uh, limit how the access, the easement burdens a land, i.e., expressly stated, you can't have trucks or commercial vehicles on easement. If the parties agree to that, and that's recorded in the land records, it will be a limitation on the use of the access easement by my client going forward. That, that's a matter of private agreement, dealing with, uh, the use of that private access agreement. I'd also point out, there's also another access way that, uh, that comes off May Po Road into Lot Seven, and of course, my client owns some property nearby as well. So there's some other alternatives. If the parties can't agree to burden the easement a little bit more, if that's the way it's gonna go, then there might be alternatives for my clients. Thank you.
Is that something we can find out before we agree to the annexation?
Yes, good, absolutely.
I think that's something I'd like to do a little more research on and hear about because, yeah, that seems like that's, I, I agree, that's a concern. I would not like, um, public vehicles or commercial vehicles on my personal driveway. So if there's a way we can work it out, that seems like that might be something that would benefit everybody. benefit everybody.
But would that be something, I'm just trying to talk this out, would that be something we would discuss in depth and in detail, if it was gonna be developed at that stage?
Yes.
That's kinda what I was going, it's...
Right, and not at the annexation stage? I'm just making sure I understand as well, I'm just looking at this two different ways here.
But it seems like there's a five-year timeframe, so even if we don't agree to the, or if, not we, but if zoning doesn't agree to make it commercial, then they wait five years, they can do it anyway. Right? Is that what I got out of that?
Well, they can go to the county and get a request of rezoning as well, anytime, if we don't annex it.
So that would be their other option, was if it doesn't annex, to rezone through the county?
So the county could, so in that case, the county could approve it, and then we have no control over it.
Sure.
Well, it gives the applicant another option, if we say no to it. That's, that's the way I'm understanding it.
Well, I'm saying, that's what he could do, if he didn't want to wait five years.
Right.
So if he do nothing and wait five years...
But again, then we would not have control at all.
Right. Be a county project.
Which is a concern.
So that would still be subject to the county's regulations and their zoning, correct?
If we don't...
Yeah, it's not in town.
So being that it's zoned RPD, I mean, that limits, there's not a lot you can really do in that zoning, so that wouldn't be a major concern to me. That's gonna limit him greatly on what he can and can't do on there. And being that one development right, some developments were lifted off the property, that restricts him even further. So I, if anything, I would think that that would be, if we go that route, we do not approve it, with the county's regulations, that if anything's not gonna be, I can't imagine that means a substantial change on that property.
Nick, for clarity purposes, that property has two development rights.
Okay, so I've...
For Farmstead Lot 7.
Okay.
But it has 10.12 acres of it that are in forest conservation.
Okay.
Okay, so it's only five plus or minus acres that can be utilized.
Now, I know you, with forest conservation, you can buy that back, there's that...
You can buy it back, or you can manipulate it and rearrange it as long as you keep the acreage exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
No, I think my only opinion is still to table, just because they didn't have enough time with not receiving their certified letters. And I just, I think in fairness, and I think giving us some more time to probably review all of this...
Well, like I said, this letter was very helpful, I thought.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree with you, I'd like to table it so I can research a little bit more.
I'd table it as well.
Do we need a vote on that, or just, okay, entertain a motion?
All right, I'll try this. I'll move that the town council tables the annexation petition for the property, known as the Hall property, located at map 0032, parcel 96, until further discussion?
Pending further discussion.
Pending further discussion.
Okay. And I'll second. Does it need to be that, or do we need the date?
No, we don't need the date.
She said it's open end.
Okay.
Okay. Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that has been tabled. And we will move on to case number 40-25, annexation of the Johnson and Johnson Properties.
I guess I'll start on this one. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to everybody that has come out, the emails that we received, we did receive the public comment. So we have seen, and I had a chance briefly to read through those emails. One thing I will say, with these annexations and with this property in particular, that it can be frustrating with the growth, I do agree with a lot of comments that I've heard. Growth is not a bad thing. You want it to be sustainable, you want it to be manageable. Obviously, my biggest concern with this annexation, obviously, you know, Rodney, you want to develop it, that's your right. The bigger issue I have is with Route 5, the infrastructure. I do agree with a lot of the comments that I heard this evening, with the emails that I read. The issue, the biggest issue by far is Cedar Lane and Route 5. That intersection is dangerous, it's been like that for years, it's not anything new, and it's not anything that started recently. With the development that could occur on that parcel, I feel that infrastructure needs to be addressed first. In most cases, it's not a perfect system, usually what happens is growth happens first, infrastructure happens second. It's a flawed system, it's not perfect, it's not right, but that's what we have to deal with, and that's how we have to live with it. But, in light of everything, and the way we are growing, and the way the county is growing, I do feel the infrastructure concerns are valid. It's been an issue, it continues to be an issue. I do think that, in light of that, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this at this time. I would prefer that state highway make the improvements, now that's like trying to pull teeth, no one wants to do it, they don't want to do it, and they don't want to pay the money to do it. But at the same time, we have to care for our residents, it's not fair to put the burden on our current residents and future residents. So I do think there's some issues there that, you know, and Rodney, I'm not attacking you, so I just want you to understand, I'm not going, you know, I'm not criticizing you or the work, or the work that you do. But I do think it's a valid concern, and just at this time, I'm not in favor of this, until we can see some substantial improvements that can support this new development. So that's where I stand at the moment with this.
Would we need Route 5, uh, state approval because of the, so, the state...
Probably a traffic study done.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And that was one of the appealing things about, you know, the multiple different, you know, accesses, it's not dumping everything on Route 5. But there, the state however, yes, there has to be a traffic study done.
And Cedar Lane is a county grid, so that would require county review and approval as well.
And, and that is encouraging, that obviously, new development's gonna happen without some improvements. I think the bigger issue for me is that improvement should be done now, even before, there's issues even before this development goes in, we all know that. Obviously, we can, we can say that all we want, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but I do think the rate of growth can be a very important factor, as several individuals mentioned. So that's one of the bigger concerns. Now, obviously, the property owner, they have the right to do what they want with their property, provided they meet the requirements, just as anybody else in this room. You can do what you want with your property, you wouldn't want your neighbor to have the authority to say, you can't do it because I don't want it. That's not how it works. So obviously, there's a challenge there, but we also have to look out for our infrastructure. We know that it's struggling, it's no question, there's no debate over that. So that's the bigger concern that I have, which is, just moving forward on this.
That is a big issue, but it's a state-level issue. As I say, when you look at schools, and you look at the regulations on expanding or building new schools, they're not gonna do that until you are over capacity to a certain degree as far as the overcrowding in schools. Then they'll fund a new school or an expansion. Roads, same, same situation, they have to meet a certain level of service to where it's failing before any infrastructure upgrades will, will take place. So that is something, it's at a state level, it's a big problem, but it is unfortunate that it's development, and then the developer would be required to provide certain upgrades in order to accommodate that infrastructure.
So we don't, yeah, I'm assuming we don't know, not knowing exactly what the development's gonna be, what requirements are gonna be from the state and the county on the road, widening, adding turning lanes, that kind of thing.
And again, there's, there's absolutely no, it's a, you know, the risk of it, the property owner, they come in and you deny the development because it's not in compliance with their zoning regulations, or it's not meeting the traffic situation, the development can be denied at that stage as well.
So currently, their existing zoning is RL, so what does that mean?
That's the residential level.
Residential level. Five dwellings per acre.
It's one dwelling per acre with the...
I mean, yes.
To purchase, to convert the development rights.
You can buy development rights up to five units per acre. And we have previously had letters from the state that say that they confirm that RL is the most compatible with our PUD.
So what does that mean, proposed zoning, PUD?
RL is the counter, and PUD is our zone.
Okay, so it's the same?
Up to, so RL is you're guaranteed one development right, and you can purchase TDRs to do, go up to five units per acre. And ours is five units per acre, and PUD is the same.
So they could do the same, if they did not come into town, they could do the same thing.
But they can do 250 houses.
Well, it's gonna be water and sewer that limit them on the range. They could do 250 if they have the capacity, I mean, build a small package plant or something like that.
And PUD, PUD has the most, I don't want to say restrictions, but we, we as the council have the most quote-unquote control over it, and that we have to approve it multiple times.
Right. And you have the final say, and not the planning commission.
I remember that when it comes to septic systems and private wells, that is actually a worse impact on our environment than it is to connect a public water and sewer. I was very interested to see when we had, I've seen in the past where there was a failed septic system, and they needed to come on to public water and sewer. It was a dramatic difference between the amount of nitrogen that's going into the environment with a well and septic versus public water and sewer.
And again, I would like to emphasize that we are one of the two designated growth areas of the county, California, Lexington Park, and Lenartown. So if you want to maintain the rural character of the county, you do have to allow the growth in these two areas.
Right, and the point, just to add on to my point earlier, is that I'm not outright opposed to this being developed down the road, I think the bigger thing is, factor here is just that the infrastructure improvements, I think, need to be made first. Obviously, that's not usually how it happens, but that's how it should happen, but I feel like there's enough traffic and enough issues already, let's not make it any worse. Now that, obviously, this annexation is not the development, it does not approve the development, but we know what's going to lead to it. It's the first step of, you know, 10 steps, this is step number one. But I just, I feel that that needs to be addressed first before we entertain this. I just want to say real quick to John and Jen, thank you for your comment. You know, I respect how you feel about it, but, I mean, today is strictly just annexation talk. I feel like the town does a great job, though, at doing our homework on what's gonna go there, like working with Rodney and whoever the developer may be. We've got to do so many processes, including a traffic study. And then it comes back to the council, because it's PUD, so we do have final say. Chris?
I have a couple. Mr. Longkins, is that right? I, I ride and run and walk Cedar Lane all the time, and I agree with you, it is a beautiful little lane, and it's very quiet and very safe, so, I'm gonna agree. I live in Academy Hills, which is just, you know, right over, and had to deal with the, making the left out to get to work in the mornings, or even to make a right sometimes, and hoping that somebody's not flying down that hill, that I may make it just in time. But with that, when we worked the comprehensive plan, one of the considerations that we included was the roundabout. Do we know, like, what would be, I realize we can't put state highway on a timeline, but what would be the reality of even trying to get that roundabout where we talked about?
The county had made a request to look at further up to like the Fairgrounds area on Route 5 a while back, and we also included it in the priority letter to the state the last couple of years. And I had written language for the priority letter that, for, specifically for looking at the intersection at Reichen and Cedar Lane, to become a priority for the county. So we've requested that, that's all you can do at this point. We actually just talked about it earlier today, that we were gonna request a meeting and try to get someone to come down and take a look at it like we did before. I mean, they approved a light at the college, and that still has not happened. I mean, I don't, you know, we don't have control over that, and they don't have any money in their budget, so, you know.
Right. And then the other was, if we were to approve, we could approve with conditions that we need to be considerate of the town homes and versus homes and whatnot.
Well, so...
Kind of in response to this comment.
When you put a zoning, you have, you have, you know, a certain allowed density, you have a certain requirement for open space, you have what's allowed, what's not allowed, so, I mean, it's gonna be a PUD, our PUD regulations.
Right. And then, but whatever Rodney would want to build, it would just come back to us to set, like Rodney could make a decision, there'll all be single-family homes versus town homes, right? And that would...
Yeah, I mean, he's gonna present his concept plan, it's gonna come to you, you're gonna have a public hearing, then we go into final site plan once that concept plan is approved.
Okay.
Again, if we don't approve the rezoning, then it's up to the county, not us. We're gonna lose control of it.
Thank you.
I had a quick question about the parcel 266 to the McDonald's, so they're included in the annexation?
No.
Oh, no. Okay, then that confused me. Got it. That answers that question.
It's the, across the street, there's a little residential parcel that's included, because we would be surrounding that property.
That's what the three-acre lot across, I think.
Yeah, so that is this small piece right here?
I think I missed that we dropped them, because we've got the corner now at Cedar Lane, then we dropped the McDonald's, and then we picked back up.
But they have, they have...
Oh, they didn't want to be...
But they're not, they're not surrounded, they're still, touch the county in the back part of the...
Oh, I think it's just so this map is so small, I mean, hell, your glass is small right here.
I know.
Is that in the couple, is it playing?
Gotcha, I thought that said 266, okay, but it doesn't, got it. So that lot is, will be cut out.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I mean, I would say, I agree, I have no problem with the annexation coming in, but I definitely have concerns over a huge number of houses. So I don't know if that's something that we can make conditional, or do we, I mean, Rodney, I don't want you to spend a whole lot of money developing plans for a whole bunch of houses to bring it to us, and townhouses, and we all turn it down.
Yeah, I think that would be like the next step, and the problem with 100% single-family community would be economic viability anymore, and those are almost impossible, and Meadows, we, you know, we even got beat up on the first portion of that, but surely, I want that also, the, even, what people can afford. I mean, everybody's houses are $650,000, $700,000, or, well, we'll be coming in next month for the 12, but we have a Meadows time run, and it is, it's just a different market there. So it would definitely be some combination, I wouldn't sit here in line, so I envision this project being 100% single-family homes, it would definitely be a combination. I spoke with John last week, and, and said along that whole property, along his property line, we do, you know, anything that I've looked at, the sketch, I have single families going along there just for the impact. And I told John, and to his wife, I didn't speak to him, like, there's no way you can make development impact. I dealt with Earl on Meadows, I mean, I build and develop, I was a farmer, I mean, I have all sides of it, I respect and love the farming community, as is my family, and I also love what we did. I was sitting in a tobacco field, darting tobacco for myself, and I decided, am I gonna actually build houses, put shelter and roofs over people's heads, or am I gonna actually raise tobacco? Which, at the time, I love farming, but, you know, I was crazy, I knew what tobacco got used for, you know, and I was like, and it was like an epiphany in the sense of 19 years old, sitting out in the field with, not a, you know, pretty broke to say, what am I gonna do? And, and we went to Mason Green, and then we started building houses a few years after that. So that's kind of where we came from, and truly respect every aspect, that's all John last week, I don't care, I could talk to him, I can't sugarcoat anything, impact, you think there's a couple hundred units even regardless, whatever number you put, if you put 150 or 240, it's an impact. It's hard, it's, as they've said here, the traffic, I get that 100%, and I truly want the council to do, it's what the, what you want to see for the town. I mean, like housing, I know the other side of it, we could go all night on, you know, you have to have a certain amount of, you know, even with the expansion things, they have water towers and that, there's, that, you're either growing, or you kind of, you gotta take a step back, and it's hard, and you don't get those. First thing we do is state highway, we're gonna do a traffic study, it's gonna be done by the professional, they're gonna give it to DPW, they're gonna give it to the state, they're gonna review it, they're gonna say, here are things, I've gone into, projects I've had in Calver County and Meadows, we put that entrance in well before, just so we weren't in there starting construction, and once I was in it, didn't have to go in for probably two years after that. I put, I begged to put a traffic light in Calver County, they wouldn't let me, the state highway wouldn't let me. It wasn't enough to warrant it. So literally, I begged to put a light in above Oakland Hall, on Round 4, at Six's Road, and they finally let me do it about, they actually did it, I didn't actually do it, I begged to put it in for three or four years before it got there. And, and, and so it is, it is something that it's, you know, no matter how hard you try at what you do, you can't just force their hand, they won't let it go if they don't feel like it's warranted, and that's what those studies are about. They supposedly are the professionals, engineers that, that understand this, we're just all at the window. We're just all at the whims of that, and there's always impact with growth. There's always downtime, and, 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 you know, too much traffic at one intersection for a time until something gets cracked, that's, that's part of growth. And, and, once again, that's completely up to planning commission and the town and the council, whether that's warranted or wanted. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of where we are. But I do see, it's going to be some type of combination component. We've talked about even a 55 and over type of small portion, where it would be something like a first floor, you know, bedroom type thing, and be held with that, maybe 30 or 40 units like that, along with some towns, along with some singles, that was the look. No, no, no kind of commercial, nothing, no rental types, everything was going to be for sale. So people can build equity. We talked about the youth, you know, trying to buy something, even like say downsizing, but that's kind of where we aren't, aren't it? But I mean, it's, it's 100% at your discretion, we would, there, it's, when Janine was talking earlier, I almost, I almost left because you realize how much goes in every project. And I thought, I'm 60, I'll be another, another 10 years of my life, I'm kidding, but I was like, she was, I was talking, but it's, it's hard, it's hard working a project, it's not easy what we do, it takes a lot to come together. And there's a lot of process, and yes, both the planning commission and the town council will see this again before it gets too far. And to not keep you such a long answer, I apologize, the answer would be that basically the first thing we would do beyond this annexation would be kind of start really drafting that plan to waste, you know, not to, you know, I wouldn't order other studies until we ultimately had an ideal, that there was something that the town was comfortable with, before we said, okay, let's, let's plow ahead and get, because it does, when you get annexed in, that's the beginning process, yes. And as a developer, I start spending money and getting in, and it just gets deeper. So I agree with what they've said here, that that is, this is the, where all that begins, so. With that said.
Like you said, it's not economically feasible to not have townhouses, or at least you don't think so. So at that point, if we said no townhouses, what does that mean? Everything stops, it's annexed in?
Yeah, most likely we walk away from the piece and, and go there. Yeah, I mean, even, like even 80-foot wide lots, when you're looking at infrastructure and this and that, it's, it's, it sounds stupid, but it's, it's almost impossible to get everything, all the economics have to come together, and then which up itself on the backend, and without some component. I mean, you have an 85-foot lot, townhouse to the 24, it's, it's three going in the infrastructure, same space, infrastructure is one, which is what smart growth and cluster subdivision is kind of all about. And you can also have just a single family that meets that criteria too, but that's kind of economically, it's, it's very difficult to do at this, at this stage. And, and support what's needed for housing in an area, because everything single is, you know, it's, it's expensive. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I think, and that's my concern too, is that as we go down the road, you know, you're going to commit and present these, the townhouses or however, and we know, State of Maryland's already told us that we don't have enough lower-income housing. So I don't know that I'm going to be able to stop it once it gets to that point, to be perfectly honest.
Is it purely the aesthetic appeal of townhouses that's the issue, or is it, what's the issue with townhouses?
I, I think it's just density.
I think it sounds people and probably, I don't know, for the McDonald's and Mr. Lumpkins, but possibly the people and the aesthetics, I don't.
Because there is a, you know, with the design regulations, and just like you did with the infill developments downtown, you know, you can make things look different as well, just a consideration.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you look at projects all over the country, and I've read lots of things about, I mean, that's the direction that everyone's building, sure.
As long as we've got like 750 houses coming into Tudor Hall, we don't know what those are going to be.
Right, I mean, it's going to be a large portion of the townhomes, I'm sure.
Right. And we know from Rodney too, right? So, you know, the townhouses now in Meadows too are like, starting at 430 for a three veteran, right? Single-family is way more than that. And, no, but people cannot afford that.
The only, I mean, in my opinion, the, the plus side to a townhouse community is they can cluster them closer together and leave more open space around the outside. So that way, homes around them are, are going to be less impacted. I mean, I have this, I live over by Tudor Hall, we're going to have the same thing in a few years, hopefully. You know, so I would, I, I would rather have a buffer, or as much of a buffer around me as possible, to preserve trees and all that than to have, you know, fences and things budding right up to my property. That's, that's the plus side to, you know, clustering it and keeping it as small as possible.
When we had started Meadows Springtime Run 2, we were looking at a 300, you know, unit, single-family, it's not, you know, even talking with Earl at that time, and, and we did, that was the concept there. We were crossing wetlands, we were crossing a massive floodplain, wetlands, which, you know, Earl and everybody that, everyone in the environment was concerned with, and we decided to condense that. And when you condense, condensing means converting from single to townhouse, most likely, that's what that means. And, and that's what we had done at that time, and, and that's what was wanted at the time, and we saved a tremendous amount of open space and the rural character and this and that. But, you know, they say, still doesn't make growth easy for anybody at all, but we, we try to be, you know, coming from all backgrounds, we try to be respectful to the needs of the community on the housing side of things, as well as the need for the, for the, you know, for the surrounding, you know, residents, including John's wife and Earl and snap. But I mean, that's still, it doesn't make it easy one way or the other.
But what I'm hearing more and more, and maybe I'm hearing wrong, is we're going more for lower-income homes.
Now, I wouldn't call it lower income, because when, when you, if 450,000 of lower income, I guess I'm, I'm with Earl, we should probably be checking out, because I, I feel for people that, like, I look at my kids' friends, I have a 29, 26-year-old daughter, and they all come to me and they say, what can I afford? And I was building housing Leonard's Grant for 350,000. So when people judge people on housing based on what they can afford in the current economy, it's kind of tough for me. So there, I'll, I'll define two things, and one thing that we've never built, which is whether, you know, subsidized housing, whatever you want to call it, wherever, wherever it comes from, government subsidized, we build what's called free economy, open market housing, which is somebody's paying for what they're getting, and I'm not, they're not being helped in any way. And that to me is somebody who's earned it, they've worked for it, and they've got, you know, you've got kids nowadays, I mean, we sell them, just sell them at Meadows Time Run. You have this wonderful young couple that has a baby and they're thrilled because they finally found something they could be a part of Leonard Town, and they got their $450,000 town. It's not like it was, you know, I don't look at it like it was a steal, they do, because they look at what else is around them with it. Hey, so it's kind of sad, and it, and it's, it is that stigma, like that when you hear affordable housing or this and that, it's really like, I would call it survival housing now, you know, things have gotten so crazy. COVID did it. I mean, it's still 60% up, it's 60% up on cost. Lumber's come way back down now, but everything else is still stupid. Trusses, eye joists, floor joists, drywall, PVC, any piping, any fixtures, a water prock I used to pay when you hooked these houses up, that goes out the street. We used to pay a thousand dollars for it, it was $8,000 at the peak, and now it's back down to four, but it's still ridiculously high for, it's called a yoke, just a one little piece of metal. And that's the kind of stuff that, I don't know when that stupidity ever leaves the market or if it does, you know, once you don't see things. So it's, it's not like it's a, if people link a, a type of housing product, a, a name of a housing product to a type of person that comes in, it's really not. And that's, that's kind of a stigma I don't agree with. But, but just free, open market housing is what I'd say more so than HUD, people hear Section 8, something subsidized, we've never been involved in any of that. We're, we're bringing housing.
I think what you're referring to is what Marion said about the trend from the government, state government, is going to be requiring municipalities and jurisdictions to do a certain amount of subsidized housing, low-income housing. It's, it's going that direction, and that's what we believe is going to happen in the future, at some point. It's not right now, now it's like, you have to say how you're going to address it in your comp plan, and how you're going to look at it, it's just, they're exploring it now. But that's, I think, the direction that it's going to go, is what everyone is saying. And the government is going to dictate how, that we have to have a certain percentage.
All I'm going to say is, I agree with Nick, people should be able to do with their property what they want to do with their property. Our cousins are selling the property, we're sick about it, it's been, I mean, our daughter lives on the other side of this property. We're raising our grandchildren, we don't live in a neighborhood for a reason, I mean, we did for a very long time, we love neighborhoods, but we wanted to move here to raise our grandchildren and to have this space. And we are lifelong residents here. And we're talking about putting in, and Rodney, I've seen your work, when you were building Leonard's Grant, I looked at your, your, what do you call it?
Model.
Model, model home, probably 15 times the good ideas.
Right.
The last thing, yeah. I mean, it's beautiful, I have no doubt that you won't put something really, really nice in there. I'm just for us, right? For the town to approve this. Again, we're for the town, love Leonard Town, but we feel like we're being pushed out. And we feel like, you know, we, we have businesses here, my sons have businesses here. Like my husband said, we just feel like we're being pushed out. And I still don't understand how we don't annex. This property can be annexed, because you're jumping right over us, but it can be. So, I don't know.
As long as you're not surrounded on all four sides by town, that you're, you're still contiguous in your back part of your property with the county, that's, that's how that can happen.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, the council?
I mean, I'd be open to tabling it, but, yeah, bring it back, but it's not, not just in a month or two, it's the idea that.
Well, if we turned it down, they can always reapply, can't they?
Yeah.
They can't.
They can't.
Not for five years.
Not for five years.
But I mean, tableting at this point, I don't think, like you said, there's not, it's not like the state's going to say.
Yeah, the state's not going to work with us.
The rest of the state always done on the other section.
Right.
For 20 years.
Again, do we want control, or do we want the county?
It sounds like, it sounds like if the county controls, if they can only build 10 houses, right?
They're, they're limited, because there is a state law that limits you if you're on private septic, you cannot subdivide and create more than seven lots. So if they were, if the county came in and said, we want to build single-family dwellings, and obviously they want to subdivide around each one, they are limited to seven. They cannot be more.
The seven lots on a private road?
No, that's, that's seven lots off the parcel.
After parent parcel?
After, after 2002. So it's, so they are limited some. Now, obviously, there's differences with townhomes and apartments, things of that nature, but there is some limitations for the county.
On the county side?
Yes.
Yeah, just to make that clear, like, you could bring water and sewer from the county, and the county can go in, and then you can click, basically, you can use TDRs and buy and get the five units per acre, so you can get the same comparable density coming through the county. Somebody will, not saying that would be me.
You can hook up the public sewer.
Somebody would, and, and so you can achieve the same density. We didn't ask for higher density than what, what it could have gotten through the county using, going through that process of water and sewer. I mean, if you water and sewer, come from the town, or water and sewer come from the county, is, is where that would come from. So, and then, and then, yeah, that's where you don't have, that's where you don't see it again, as far as what gets built there. You know, as far as the town, Leonard Town doesn't control that anymore, then it goes to control of St. Mary's County.
So again, do we want to control it, or do we want the county to control it?
Well, I mean, that is our, that is our growth, any way we look at it. Like I said, I'm not against the annexation, but.
Again, that's all we're doing today is.
Right, right, but I'm just concerned, you know, I just want, I don't want him to send a lot of money that, you know, without getting a lot of feedback and a lot of opinions from other people, and I'm not sure that it's going to be viable with what we're going to approve.
And that would be the, for next step, would be to, almost have concept, like very preliminary concepts come in and evaluate something that, that would be kind of applicable for everybody, and that's, that's probably where the road ends.
So that would probably be fair, like approval with preliminary concepts done from Rodney?
Right, the next step is concept, anyway, right.
That would need.
It doesn't meet our code, does it meet the density, you know, all the, the traffic subsidy, all of that.
Agreed.
That would need to be, would not.
You don't need to add that into the approval.
I was just going with what Janine said earlier, approval with those conditions, and I know Rodney would do that anyway, because that's our process, but.
We have to.
Well, I mean, the motion to annex, you're either annexing or you're delaying, so those are your three choices. But there's not, you're not going to bring in an annex that with conditions, I mean, you're just going to rely on your zoning to, that he has to meet the zoning.
Yeah, right. She always follows our process. I mean, everyone has.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the annexation, but I think Rodney, you know, pay attention, there's a lot of people here, and you're going to have a lot of, a lot of hearings and a lot of comments, I think, on every step of the way.
Sure.
So, you know, just, I think that's something that you need to be aware of.
Okay, does anyone care to make a motion?
Sir, I knew that the town council approved the annexation petition for the property known as the Johnson, Johnston Properties at MAP 0041, parcel 0235. And MAP double zero 41, parcel 0266, finding that the proposed annexation is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, meets all statutory limits under Maryland law, and is in the best interest of the town. I further move to authorize the town administrator to execute all necessary documents to complete the annexation process.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries forward to line. Thank you.
Are there, are public hearings as part of the, the PUD?
Yes.
So, yeah, there will, will be other public hearings.
For the development itself.
Okay, so we'll go and go back to our regular meeting. If anybody cares to leave, they can certainly go before we get started again here. Okay, we'll go back to the treasurer's report.
So the first item from the transparent report is question amendment, any day, town we can take 100. And that's for four monitors that we purchased that were on sale at Staples, to have larger monitors or any of the eyes. And the offset of that was interest income, interest income, we have budgeted for the whole year, $110,000, and we're already at 108. So we still have like seven left.
That's great.
Yeah, so there's a little bit, there's overage there.
Why do we have, what's causing that overage?
Well, we just don't know, so we don't want to ever inflate or go with actual interest income. We don't know if anything's going to go back to what we consider normal. So we just put in.
So we underestimated it.
Yes, yes.
Plus money has stayed in well, water tower, it's way too.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
We got the CDA money is fast.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Awesome. Well, that's worth our words.
That is a good thing. The next, do you all have to?
Are we on, can you tell me where we are? Are we on?
We're on budget minimum.
No, no, I know, the monitor, the software, support.
The BA 2026 dash 100.
I'm sorry, Sharon.
That's okay.
I apologize. I was going in.
I was going in order, but then I was doubting myself and jumping to the other. Thank you.
You can vote on them all together or separately, whatever you want to do.
And is this using, for each of you, having the two monitors each, because that is like my jam, so.
Yes.
I know when you're working financials, that's way more complicated. Nobody else does, right?
Ginny does with, with Mary and things like that, but I don't, and the other people don't.
I will not let you judge me, but I require to, I do too. I will not do much for financials.
We'll be good on all three at one time, so let's get.
Okay, essence of time.
I'll go on to the next one. The next one again is, this one is for, when we did the utility upgrade and presented it to the council through budget process, it only included one year of history being moved over. So this budget adjustment is for $4,500 for an additional three years to come over. So we're not switching systems back and forth, you know, so often, because 12 months is really a lot of time, it's only four bills. So we want to give people historical estimates on what their usage is going to be, when we have all these settlements coming through, moving and move out. So just gives us a little bit more history in our current system. We treat them like today and, so it's so nice. So, and we will be also sending something out to our customers when the portal for the auto draft ACH and ECheck is available. We will be starting that, which automatically drafts their account into our account instead of them pushing and paying their account to the town's account. So again, this is also using interest income that we have an overage to pay this $4,500 to have the additional years brought into the new U B four software. This last budget amendment is for the DHTD Main Street Improvement Grant. And really, what this is, is it's just bringing forward funds, the approval of the grants that we received in fiscal year '25 and '24 that were unspent. We defer that revenue, so it's not included in our audit as we've received this money. We want to make sure that lines up our revenue expenses lineup, so we're moving the revenue in the '26, because that's where the expenses are.
Gotcha.
So that's what this is doing here.
And there's no problem with that loan program, or that's a grant program?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, still have timelines.
Yes, yeah, we still have timelines. Lastly, we did receive our November income tax payment, our first big income tax payment of the year. It was about $40,000 higher than last year at this time.
Wow.
So I don't know if that's forecast of the year, but I'm not going to get a close up, but I thought I'd just let you all know, because income tax is very volatile. So, but I thought I'd share that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any questions, Rodney?
So when we make these motions, want each one individual.
You have to do individually, you just say the budget amendment numbers, the three budget amendments.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to go ahead and do it?
Why not?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion for budget amendment BA 2026 dash 100, BA 2026 dash 101, and BA 2026 dash 102, to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is that it, Sharon?
That's all I have?
Thank you. All right, we did receive deputies' report. Thank you for staying. I know you've got some things to do, so, any questions for, our deputy, Will Hellman? Okay.
Thank you. Good job at Christmas on the square. Thank you.
Yes.
To all of our folks out there serving alongside you.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go ahead and move to Michelle.
This name.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we have a planning commission meeting coming up on December 15th. We will, the planning commission will be reviewing case number 100 dash 15D, which is section two, phase four, Meadows and Town Run. It's the 12 simple-family blocks. The owner consultant is seeking recommendation from planning commission to town council for approval, final approval.
Okay.
And that's all we have.
Comments, questions? Thanks, Sarah. Now we can move to Michelle.
The last couple items on my report are the purchase of a 2019 tram trailer from Ocean City, a set of those. We've been talking about this and looking for this for a long time. We did have someone go and look at them, first, and they said, we're going to have to regale. They'll be towed by a truck or a vehicle, but right now we're thinking we would use one of the town trucks to tow them. You had one of the costs of insurance, and it was in the $2,500, $2,600 range. They, price two in their quote, but it's really one unit. So it was around $2,600.
Now, with annual? Yeah. That's pretty good.
Oh, that was a year for the insurance?
Yeah. It's a good look, Sharon. It's a little cold. Air blown in the wind.
So I'd like to move forward with buying this Ocean City, kind of holding one for us.
And how do we, how do we run these? Do they get towed by a pickup truck?
In Ocean City, they use, for right now, we would be using one of our vehicles.
But not like the, not the little, whatever?
No, no.
The tiny one?
Yeah, the little, yeah, the little one. So it'd have to be a truck to tow.
Rodney, I mean.
And what kind of license do you have to have to pull this?
You have to have a CDL license for that many passengers.
That's a passenger group.
Okay, so we have to have one of our people go get that license, if they didn't have it already?
That, or if we hired a bus driver or somebody in the summertime to drive it, that already has a license on it, has a license on it.
And it has the handicap accessibility.
Yes, yes.
Budget-wise?
We had 30, oh, 30,000, 30,000 in budget, 30,000 in the budget, this is 20,000. I'd still like to look at, I do bomb card, that one is hideous that we have, using it, it is very, it does come in very, very handy. But we'll, that'll be, we're going to have to look at what we need to.
So we should have plenty for that.
Yeah, yeah, we should be in a range of, depends on how many passengers we want to do.
Sure.
Sometimes we could just use that and not use the tram, but, yeah.
All right, I move to approve the purchase of the 2019 tram trailers from the town of Ocean City, Maryland, in the amount of $20,000.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, the final item, these poor ladies, sat through that everything, so.
Like class A, then class A3?
Yes, yes, what they have is beer, wine, and liquor, I'm sorry, they have beer and wine off-sale license.
Okay.
Grant program additional funding available. Six, Alex Bell, Nick Stelway, Alex Bell, Nick Stelway, Bernie Bell's Building, and Bella Bridal. Louis' Bagels was a very successful grand opening November 22nd. They sold 2,000 bagels that day, continue to sell out every day.
Send out invitations during, I mean, it was kind of word of mouth. Send out invitations during, I mean, it was kind of word of mouth.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you go in there?
It looks awesome.
Well, that's the other thing, Mike, I'm very excited about it.
The Bell Building there.
Three main projects, one thing is.
The Bell Building there.
Three main projects, one thing is a new glass commercial door, a new glass commercial door.
We'll go ahead and move on to council reports. Events.
No really update on the next meeting. State and municipality, which was in Annapolis, 105 in attendance. What else is coming up? The Maryland mayors.
Contributions are more valuable now, and remember, after this year, the charitable contributions will actually start to decrease the percentage, they're going to be percent limited. So if you're one of those people that are looking at doing their charity for tax purposes. This bracelet, this is a nice bracelet, and he says, this bracelet, this is a nice bracelet, and he goes, oh, you know, it's so cool. It's an A for the town of Annapolis, and it's got the Capitol building on it, and I was like, oh, that's nice, but, you know, I really, why would I care about an Annapolis bracelet? And he's like, what do you want?
Okay, okay. Anybody else have anything for the, anybody else have anything for the good cause?
I skipped over it, but, I skipped over it, but thank you for accepting our application and the grant, thanks to the Main Street Committee. Thank you for accepting our application and the grant, thanks to the Main Street Committee, commissions of Leonard, commissions of Leonard Town, I'm excited to be in Leonard Town.
I'm excited to have you.
Thank you.
Okay.